Yes, from Hawthorne by Ma'am.
Call the board?
Oh, we're ready to go.
Do that. Pledge of allegiance. He is not here, Officer. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, please.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Um, we want to... We want to do this on the president's report?
Uh, there's no... This is the committee of the whole, so there's no reports tonight, so... Maybe after I present the plan?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, discussion information items to do the COVID-19 presentation.
Okay, Dave, if you could set that up so it will be on both. People can see at home as well as... So we've done a couple things since the last board meeting to just finalize the transition plan back with students back on campus. The first thing I'd like to highlight is when you go to the main webpage, you will now see that the COVID information is right at the front of the webpage. The reason for this is to make sure people are very clear on where the plan is, if you need information, the calendar of what days your students need to attend based on the alpha split, and as well as keeping track of the local positivity rates and case data for our school matrices. When you click on that, you'll see if you... The top part is our transition plan, which is, you know, whether when we're in remote learning, virtual or in person, virtual and in-person learning, and then finally the green phase, which is in-person only. Slightly below that on the webpage, and the board members have this on their Chromebooks as well, is all the case data and information in regards to the weekly case data that comes up on the Cook County Department of Public Health that we're using to justify having students on campus or in the event we need to transition back to remote learning. So I think the first thing that needs to be made clear tonight to everybody watching is that this is a very fluid situation, and we can... We will continue to post this data on a weekly basis and align it to the school matrices that were provided by the IDPH and the Cook County Department of Public Health to keep us on track with our current plan. If we scroll back up to the top, you'll see that you can click on the actual plan, and it says click here, and it'll take you to a bigger version so you can see the whole screen. In the upper left-hand corner are the RB matrices and guidance, which we discussed at the last board meeting in October or September, excuse me, at the September Committee of the Whole. And what if... Dave, if you could click on that for me, please? The left... The left corner, there you go. You got to sign into that? Okay, so when if you... If you click on that and from the website, that will show you the three levels of transmission levels and what the case rate should be. The second thing on the main chart is if you go under the schedule and the plan, you'll see where it says half-day schedule and plan. So if we click on that and leave that up for a minute, I can talk about that.
Yeah, somebody's going to have to open up the share settings on that, because even I'm getting that from the web, right?
Okay, so Mr. Fisher will fix that while we take a minute here to talk about the schedule. But the main... The main part of the plan is the half-day schedule, and this went out to all parents on Friday, so people had enough time to view this. And a couple things. Why are we going with the seven periods? Okay, the seven-period classes, we had some... We fielded some questions. Parents are like, "Well, my kids are losing instructional time." Under remote instruction, classes were 40 minutes. Under this period, under this schedule, class periods will be 35 minutes, so your students will only be losing five minutes per class period. And we did this so that we would have... We can easily transition from 25%, and hopefully at a point in November, we can transition to 50%. The concerns really come up with the student lunches and providing opportunities with groups of 50 throughout the building. We won't be able to manage that capacity in our building. Our campus is just not laid out to do that safely. And so we went with the seven-period schedule so that students can see their teachers every day. The students that elect to stay remote, which right now is about 32 to 33%, those students are getting the same instruction as the students that are coming in on campus. Why... That we fielded some questions about what's the purpose of bringing students back on campus if for this second quarter, teachers are going to still be teaching on a virtual platform, whether it's Zoom or Google Meets? Well, there's a couple, right? The first thing is it's a process. I need to make that real clear to parents. This is truly a process. The first step in that process is getting students and staff comfortable being back on campus in classrooms together, where we can still do some social distancing, people can still wear their masks, but we haven't been back on campus since March. So the first step in this process is getting people coming back on campus, going through their schedules. This is a benefit for students because it gives students an opportunity to get out of their bedrooms or their kitchens or their dining rooms, wherever they're doing remote learning, and come back to campus. Their first phase will be for the 25% will be one day a week, but it's an opportunity to get, you know, get out of bed, get back to some normalcy of going through your schedule, getting on campus, going from class to class, seeing some of your classmates, seeing your teachers. Yes, you're still interacting via Zoom, but some teachers will do that differently. Some teachers will project a Zoom in the classroom. Some teachers will run, have students participate both through the projected method or through the Chromebook, but it's an opportunity to get some of that face-to-face interaction. And then the second phase will be to try to transition to 50%, and if second quarter goes well and our case data stays in the moderate level, we talked last week with the board and the union about revisiting what that hybrid plan or what type of plan we can implement second semester so that we can begin to start having some in-person instruction. But we have to go through this first phase of getting students and teachers used to being back together on campus and following all the safety procedures that we've had to put in place. I'm sure if you've walked down the hallways tonight, you've seen the tape through the hallways, making one-way hallways, you see all the stairs designated, which stairway is going up, which stairway is going down. So there are a lot of things that we need to get everybody acclimated to and become comfortable with, because I think we're going to be in this for a long time, at least the rest of the school year, where we're going to have to be following some of these safety procedures. So that's the intention of the first part of this process. The subgroups, we had... We wanted to make sure that we had made this a collaborative process, so we had... We have multiple subgroups that are participating and working, and so they helped put together some of the logistical plans that you see attached that went out to the parents, as well as some of the safety procedures and some of the things that are going in place and that are... Will be sent out to staff members later this week to make sure that the plan is implemented safely. So October 19th is a weird week. It's the first week of second quarter. It starts the first week of second quarter, but we only have three days of instruction. Thursday is parent-teacher conferences, and Friday is an institute day. And so the logic of having only freshmen attend for those first three days, broken down by alpha group, was our freshmen had one opportunity to come on campus, and that was during orientation week for one day, whether they did AM or PM session. So we thought it was important for that first week to give freshmen an opportunity to get acclimated with all the safety procedures, kind of refiguring out their schedule. They haven't had to walk through their schedule since freshman orientation or that orientation week, so just giving them an opportunity to kind of shake the cow webs out and to come on campus and to participate and see their teachers again and get used to where their classes are and what they need to do. The week of October 26th is when we'll officially start the 25% process, and that's broken down by alpha slice. Dr. Freitas put a nice calendar in the plan that went out to all the families, so you have a clear understanding of when your student comes to school. The goal of this is to try to do this for two weeks. So two things would need to happen. We want to make sure all the safety procedures and students are following the rules that are in place, like wearing their masks and following social distancing when possible, washing your hands, and not congregating in the hallways or places where, you know, we can't do social distancing. But if all that's going well and our positivity rates are still low and in the moderate on our school matrix page, then we would try to transition to 50%. We would do that for two weeks, and again, if things are going well with our case data, as well as the implementation of all our safety guidelines with 50% of students on campus, we'll do that for two weeks. The week of Thanksgiving, we only have two days of classes, so it makes sense to allow students to learn remotely for those two days. It also provides an opportunity to keep everybody separated before you go to see your loved ones over the Thanksgiving holiday. So the week of Thanksgiving is kind of like a restart, a break, a regroup, where students will learn those two days remotely, then they'll have the Wednesday through Friday off for Thanksgiving holiday. We come back before winter break, we would have two weeks of 50%. Again, at any time, this can go backwards. If we start to get... If our positivity rates or our case data increases and we have to flip back to remote, we can. So this schedule kind of keeps that fluidity possible. And then we still have not made a final decision with the teachers. We're talking with the teachers and the instructional coaches, but I... We're looking at finals week, if it's better to just have a regular instruction, a regular instruction week or no finals. We're going back and forth on that a little bit, but I think it's leaning towards no finals, but no final decision has been made. So Dr. Freitas will work with the instructional coaches and the teachers to make a final decision on that and send that information out. So with all that being said, I just want to take a minute to acknowledge, like, I understand, you know, as I stated back in August, and then I stated again in September, and Tom stating again in October, there is no right solution here. I do think this is the best solution right now. The first step is of the process is getting staff and students back on campus. Our model is very, very similar to a lot of the local high schools in our area that are bringing students back on campus, because you have to still provide that remote piece for any student that does not want to come back on campus. This is a very similar model to what a lot of the other high schools are doing. Their schedules may be slightly different, their campus may be slightly bigger to where they can provide lunch, but everybody is doing something very similar to this, because we've all been meeting since last May, just talking about how school will look like this year. So I just want to echo that, that we're not doing something that's way outside of the box, that there's no educational value to. This is something that we do believe is the first step of getting back to how to function and play school during the pandemic. I think that's all the points I needed to cover. I'd like to take a minute to see if there's any discussion from the board or any questions from the board.
I think that was a very good summary. Could you just provide, I think it's been in the packet, some of the high-level safety considerations again, which I know are important to the students, the faculty, the families, just so we have a rundown of those?
That's the major. The safety stuff is... We restarted, we shifted around some of Airmark's... Airmark is our custodial provider, so we have two custodians assigned throughout the school day. This has been happening already throughout the school day while teachers have been on campus, but they just do nothing but go around for the first four hours of each of their shifts and do nothing but continue to wipe banisters, doorknobs, bathrooms, clean areas. So there's constantly two people walking around cleaning high-use traffic, high-traffic areas in the school. We reestablished our HVAC system schedule so that our HVAC system starts at 4:00 a.m. and runs through at least 7:00 p.m., so there are multiple outside air changes well before the staff and students will be on campus and well after staff and students are on campus to make sure there's sufficient airflow. Besides airflow and the safety standards, we've purchased several partitions and dividers for teachers, as well as working with the accommodation process with Kristin and HR to make sure people that needed any type of accommodations or had health concerns, those accommodations have been met. We have established... Let's slip in my head right now.
Hand sanitizer, as well as wipes and masks.
In every classroom.
Available in every classroom.
Right?
We shut off water fountains, that only the water bottle fill part is active, so that water fountains can't be used. Additionally, Airmark uses a hospital-grade sanitizer as they would during any flu season, but they've been using that since March.
And to add, we will be using the Raptor self-certification system that is currently being used in 96, where parents will receive an email and they ask five few questions related to COVID-19 symptoms. And if they respond to yes, automatically we get notified, you know, not to admit that student, but if they get no, we get the clearance and we will let that student in. So the students will be screened and will also be doing the temperature checks here when they get to school.
We had additional staff trained to do contact tracing to support the Cook County Department of Public Health. The Cook County Department of Public Health does the primary contact tracing, but then we still have to work to see if there was any groups or activities or teams that may have had close contact and we do have a positive case. So we had several people on staff go through the CDC contact tracing webinars, so those people will directly be responsible to handling our contact tracing. So we have taken several steps to get to a point to where I do feel it is time to start bringing students back on campus.
Thank you. I think I want to ask a follow-up question with Dr. Freitas on the certification. What else are we doing to communicate to, again, students and families, the importance of transparency and the three W's and that piece of this, which is so important, and to the partnership of bringing them back to campus?
So, of course, we're doing... We're doing eBlast. I will follow up with a phone blast every Monday, you know, except this past Monday. You know, I have been doing kind of a live Instagram, just giving people updates, you know, of our plans. And then tomorrow, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., I will review the plan in details. We have one-hour schedule. I'm only going to take 20 minutes, and I'm going to take 40 minutes for questions. So for every student and family member that is interested in what our plan is, has questions or want to know more, please attend the meeting. You know, my lifetime meetings have been pretty good. I've had over 100 parents attend, so I'm expecting that and even more. But parents, tomorrow is an opportunity, parents and students, for us to get together and talk about these safety protocols. It's an opportunity for us to get together and so I can respond to any questions you have or any doubts and concerns that you may have. So that's... Those are some of the things that I've done and I will be doing.
You know, an additional safety measure that I didn't touch on that this plan provides is parents, students, if at any time you're experiencing any symptoms or not feeling good that morning, this first phase of this plan allows you to stay home and get the same instruction you would if you're in class. Yes, you'll miss some of that social interaction, you'll miss some of that face-to-face interaction, but at this point in time, we have to be more safe. We have to make sure safety is our top concern if we want to expand this into second semester and try to get back to a true hybrid model. And so what this... What this model provides is if your parents, students, if your child's not feeling good or students, you're old enough now, if you're not feeling well that morning, it's better to attend remotely than to risk it. Okay? And I know in the old days, or I shouldn't say old days, up until last year, we used to incentivize kids to have good attendance. This attendance won't hurt against you if you attend remotely until you feel 100% to be back on campus. Are there any other questions from the board? Tom?
So I want to circle onto an aspect. You know, we're obviously doing this, or we're about to authorizing moving into this next phase. In addressing the... All the needs that have been expressed by the... By members of community, and obviously we do it because we believe we're moving in the right direction. Over the last two weeks at least, there have been multiple reports that the in-class instruction will be nothing else than what we do right now. It's just that students would be sitting in a classroom as opposed to at home. That's of concern to me, because first of all, I don't believe that is accurate, but I would like to hear a little more about... I mean, these have been... These have been opinions and voices coming out of this building partially, and I think it's very important that we're as clear as we can be with all members of the community what that in-person instruction will look like and, you know, is there a laptop and earphones, and how can students in that classroom interact with teachers?
So we piloted this a couple times in the instructional coaches meeting, and Dr. Freitas was a part of that, so I'll let him speak to that shortly. But I think it's important that parents understand the first phase of this process, which this plan lays out. It's the teacher primarily will still be teaching on the computer to the 75% of the students at home. Those 25% of students that are in the classroom will be engaging in that instruction, just like the 75% that are at home, or however those percentages break down of who chooses to come or who chooses not to come. The importance of that goes back to what I originally said, the first process of having students on campus and getting comfortable with teachers and students back in classrooms. How those teachers decide to teach that, some teachers may teach to the Zoom and have their students participate while on their Chromebook in their classroom. What worked best for when we piloted it with the instructional coaches was projecting the Zoom, so the kids that were... The people that were on campus would be watching the Zoom on the big screen in the classroom and only using their Chromebook to participate in the chat room or to hear the questions that were submitted through their air buds or to actually ask their questions, so the kids at home can pick up on it on the Zoom to hear that. So there is some teacher interaction. What I want to make clear under this first plan is the kids on campus won't be doing a hands-on lab while the kids at home are just watching. We're not there yet, because we'd have to clean all the equipment between classes and do some things, but it's a step towards that, that hopefully we can start to do that second semester. Dr. Freitas, you want to?
And when we kind of experimented, big shout-out to Kylie Lindquist, our assistant principal, and to the ICs, you know, when we experimented, having a staff member kind of, you know, speak, you know, through a virtual platform and people be live with our headphones, you know, we ran into, you know, interference, into volume issues, you know? It's been a challenge, so what we've noticed that works best to get everyone on the same page is to have everyone wear a headphone and ask the questions through kind of the headset, because if someone has their volume on and is speaking to the computer, it kind of creates this interference. And so, you know, a big shout-out to everyone that helped me experience that. We did it twice, and we kind of, you know, figured and concluded that the best way to have a clear picture is for everyone to be... Have a headset while they're speaking and engaging. And to really add to what Dr. Skinkis said, you know, our direction, our guidance to our staff is this, right? We're going to engage students daily. We're going to monitor them, right? Take attendance. However, for the continuity of learning and to make sure that we're all on the same page, at least at this moment, I'm not saying that it cannot evolve, you know? The best way is to have everyone learn through, you know, Google Meets or through Zoom. However, we're not going to stop it. If a teacher wants to get creative, as long as they feel safe to do so and wants to have, you know, some students at home doing activities, students in person do something else, you know, we're okay with that. We're never going to squash creativity. On the contrary, we promote academic freedom. That's what makes, I think, our high school very special. But it's going to be a journey to get back to what traditional teaching looked like. So at the moment, that's our plan, Mr. Jakes.
So having people in the classroom, a lot of times what happens is the teachers will establish a breakout room on the Zoom call or on the Google Meets call, and then kids will work in those small breakout rooms together. Well, as long as this, under the 25% model, those students might be able to be... That might be one breakout room with those kids in class. That's, you know, it's the same thing. I know there's been groups of students meeting at Starbucks and groups of students meeting at each other's houses and doing little learning groups each day to go through their classes. This is providing some of that and moving that in the same direction. The other thing that came up, and I do want to touch on this, is, you know, we went back and forth as a board and as a school district with the Zooms and whether kids had to have their cameras on, not have their cameras on, and we have received feedback from our teachers. And I think the board saw this in the survey that went out after the first two weeks or three weeks of remote learning, right? Just the face-to-face interaction, a lot of our students might, you know, they sign into the Zoom call and then they turn their camera off, and the teacher doesn't know if they're paying attention or listening or participating. Well, now providing that opportunity for that student to come to class and actually see their facial expressions, yes, it's half of their face is covered with a mask, but you can kind of see if a kid's getting it or is rubbing their head or rolling their eyes because they're not understanding, and that might provide the teacher an opportunity to say, "Hey, wait, maybe I need to teach this a different way," or "Slow this down," or "If you're having questions, maybe you can submit them in the chatroom." Some of that's not occurring right now on the Zoom or Google Meets, so this is what I'm saying, it's the next step in the process.
Yeah. If I could just, you know, as an educator, it's been rough, right? Like, we do this on Zoom and are on Google Meets, and you're looking out there and there's... You're not getting any feedback, right? So now that you're going to have a quarter of the kids in front of you, that's that whole body language piece that you connect with, you know, just human to human, not even teacher to kid, right? So I'm confident that this staff, these teachers, everybody in the building, right, is going to be able to do what it takes to innovate, to make changes, because... And that's, you know, that's hard, right? Like, I mean, and we ask it of our kids every day, right? We want you to learn, we want you to grow. These teachers, they're going to be uncomfortable, and it's going to get a little messy, right? Because when we have that circle, right? We live here most of the time because it's easy, right? And then as that next outer concentric circle is where it gets a little rough, and then the farthest out circle around those two is where the learning and the growing takes place, right? And everybody's got to get over to there, and it's not going to be easy, but they will... All the kids and the adults have to move in that direction, and that can be a little scary, right? And I think that's where some of this is coming from, right? One of the things that is very hard for some teachers is like, I... And this is the way we were taught. It's not the way we want kids to learn now, but like, I am the sage on the stage. I am the holder of the knowledge, right? What we say now is we want you to be the guide on the side. So if they bought into that, this transition won't be so hard for them. But if they're still like, "I'm the sage on the stage, and you come and you listen to me and you do whatever I say," right, kind of... Not exactly like that, but if they... If there are some staff, and I'm not necessarily saying it's RB staff, I'm generalizing teachers have that, this makes that even harder. So, but I'm confident that I think that these teachers will be able to connect with the kids both online and in-person eventually. They'll get there.
So one other thing that did come up that we did field some questions on, and to reiterate this, and I know where the board's at with this now, but we do have a few staff members that need... That have some high-risk medical conditions, and we need to make some accommodations for them. And as we talked about back in August, when we were going through this, and in September, no one can teach our classes better than our teachers themselves. So for these few teachers that do have some of these medical conditions, some of them will be teaching in an office in the building and will have a staff member or a substitute supervising the class and projecting the Zoom, setting up the technology, but so those kids can still interact in that class. And it might only be one class in that student's schedule, but it's better to have that teacher teaching that class than to ask that teacher to take a leave and get a substitute that doesn't have any knowledge of the content or where they are at right now in the curriculum after first quarter and to teach that class. So I know there were some parents that submitted questions on that, and Dr. Freitas did a nice job talking through those parents. And again, is this ideal? A pandemic's not ideal. None of this is ideal. Wearing a mask and trying to talk to the board for a couple hours is not ideal. This is the changes... We're trying to be as flexible as possible and as effective as possible for your students.
But is that teacher here on campus?
Most of those teachers will be somewhere in the building, yes.
Okay, because we cannot give concessions to be easy when our families are now stressed to the breaking edge because companies are coming back.
Right. These are not concessions. These are accommodations under ADA, so I am... We work directly with our legal department to be sure.
Yeah, whatever their doctor says, right? You have to do what the doctor...
So I think, Tom, you know, I had a lot of the same questions this week, and I called Kevin probably every day. He was so excited to hear from me. But particularly because, you know, some of the, you know, the feedback I got from... But particularly because, you know, some of the, you know, the feedback I got from parents and from kids, you know, that they can't even drink water in the classroom and some crazy outlandish things. But the, this is kind of a best practice, I think. And, you know, we talked about how other schools and other districts across the state are doing this. And I, you know, I, you know, as I stated plenty of times, I never want to go into a, what are other people doing? We'll do that. I want to go, what is the best practice? How are we coming back? What is the best way for the kids to come back? And this is kind of the model that many, many schools are, what I'm told, you can tell me, again, please, and tell the community of the way this, these schools are coming back throughout the state to have children be in-person learning.
High schools.
High schools.
High schools.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good distinction.
So, because it's, high schools are a little more complicated.
No, no, and I appreciate that additional information. I think I would just, you know, to the extent that the community is watching or listening tonight, I think there was a lot of information to share that is very important to provide context.
Yes, for sure.
And so forth. I'm just, I guess, I'm going to say it every time, if necessary, I think because of the crisis nature, the uncertain conditions, it's a matter of attitude. And I would like to, you know, encourage all of us and every member of the community to start from a positive attitude where we assume that we are doing it because we want to learn, we're going to improve, we want to do it better for the kids. But when I hear things, when I hear students all of a sudden getting feedback and being discouraged even more so than they were when they weren't sure whether we were ever going to go back, I just think that doesn't really serve a good purpose. If we do this in good faith, I just, I'm expecting every member of this community to support that and otherwise, it's not helpful.
Right. Everyone needs to rise to the occasion. Ready?
Yes.
I would agree. I do think, I would hope that some of that feedback you're hearing, so maybe some of those staff members that were maybe having some conversations with students, I think the biggest thing for some of the teachers that I have talked with is they want to make sure parents don't come in with a false set of expectations. They want to make sure parents don't think like, hey, we're jumping right back into where we left off in March because it's not going to look like that. And then maybe in the process of relaying that message, some people have maybe have not been as positive as what you just said. But I would hope on how this plan has been put together, the collaboration that's been used, the meeting that we had last week with the RBA, I would think everybody's putting their best foot forward.
Well, I would just add, I mean, I think we've seen so far this year some amazing flexibility and creativity in pockets around this building. And I think those are some really positive stories, right? Whether it's on the musical performance front or on the sports front or Hispanic Heritage Month, you have things happening that are very engaging to the students and to the staff and the community. And those are solutions in all of this uncertainty. I mean, I've just been so impressed by some people's creativity and going the extra mile. And I know that everyone has it in them to do that. I think Tom said it very well. This is uncharted territory, so we're just doing the absolute best. Everyone needs to continue to do the best they can.
Okay. So I guess.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask something. Do we have the results of a survey saying how many students are planning on coming?
It was roughly like 68 to 32, something like that, 67, 33.
All right. Well, let's move on. Before we move on, I do, I do have a statement I'd like to read. I want to, I want to start with a genuine thank you from the Board of Education to all the teachers, support staff, administrators, and students who've been and are working diligently towards a positive outcome to the challenges we are facing. This is new territory for all involved. I met with the President of the RBEA, Dan Bonarigo, along with the Superintendent, Dr. Skinkis, on multiple occasions since the start of the school year. These meetings were reassuring and culminated in an all Board of Education and RBEA Executive Committee meeting last Tuesday in the cafeteria. While not all the concerns were addressed or even solved, it was very apparent that progress was being made. Both the Board of Education and the RBEA have shown a willingness to collaborate and work towards solutions to meet the needs of all of our students. These discussions can and did get passionate at times. And what these discussions say to us as a board is that both parties truly care about our students and faculty's health needs. This is a relationship I would expect nothing less. I want to assure the community and staff that we are proud of our educators. The work that has been done and will be done in the future for the betterment of our children is obvious from our continued negotiations. We look forward to a smooth, orderly, and safe opening on October 19th. We look forward to leveraging technology so that our students receive the best education possible during these challenging times. I look forward to a cooperative student body and workforce in the coming months so that we can increase our student population to 50% beginning November 9th. I challenge the Board of Education, the administration, the community, and the RBEA and its members to pledge to be a leader in education innovation moving into the new year. This will not be an easy task, however, I'm confident our community will persevere together. Thank you very much. Let's, having said that, let's move to FOIA requests.
We have one FOIA response requesting our Title IX policies. And again, they were redirected to the website where all of our Title IX and harassment policies, blame manager policies are listed, as well as the name and contact information of our Title IX coordinator.
Okay. This is the time for visitor's statements. Does anybody like to make a statement? We'll move right on to additional discussion items. At this point in the meeting, Board of Education members may request to add an additional discussion item. Am I right? Consent agenda. Approval of minutes.
They, there was a few amendments made, right? Not here, previous, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on September 8th and 22nd, 2020, and October 6th, 2020, open and close as presented in the October 13th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second, Mr. Jacobs.
Is it a roll call?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Resco?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right. Old business, life safety, capital improvements.
Oakbrook Mechanical was here doing some final punch list items yesterday. And today, we should hopefully be having their final pay application completed at the November board meetings. That sound correct, Kristin?
Correct.
And then that would wrap up that project, correct?
Correct.
And then you and Joel will be speaking to the board or presenting to the board a summary of where we're at with life safety at the November meeting? Either November or December, we haven't decided, right?
All right. Liability insurance.
Kristin, you want to provide a short update for the group?
Sure. The Superintendent Subadvisory Council met on September 24th to review the two quotes that we received from Alliant and Skip, which is a cooperative that we are looking into. I'm in the process of gathering additional follow-up information and filling out applications. And then I'll share that information back with the Subadvisory Committee. We hope to have a recommendation at the November meeting.
All right. New business, payment of bills.
There were some questions submitted. Dr. Smetani, you want to address? I believe I have three that were listed.
Correct. The first two were general questions, so I'll start with those. The first question was about bandwidth and whether or not we needed to increase that. Every day, our Director of Technology gets a report on the use of bandwidth from the previous day. Currently, with the teachers in the building videoconferencing, we're at 10% of our capacity. To give you some context, on a typical day when all students are present in a normal school year, we're under 50% of our capacity, somewhere in the 40%, depending on the day. We have 1.5 gigabytes of broadband, which includes a backup system in case one goes down. And so, you know, the Director of Technology will certainly monitor this on a daily basis as he normally does to determine if any adjustments are needed. But we feel pretty confident that even with bringing 25% or 50% of the students back on campus and doing videoconferencing, we should have more than enough bandwidth to support that plan. The second general question was about understanding the increased costs or financial impact of COVID. At the next meeting in October, I'll provide an updated report on kind of how we finished out last year and the impact of COVID, just focusing specifically on the COVID impact, as well as share my running log of increased costs with the board at that point. And then the third question was on Board Book Page 92 and 93 in regards to NEF. NEF is a company used to purchase the athletic awards for the year, which consists of items that are typically placed on a letterman jacket. So whether that's a four-inch bulldog or the graduation year or various things that go along with that, pins, things of that nature. And each athlete receives those every year depending on their level of participation. So that's what that purchase was for. And that concludes the questions that were submitted in advance.
And is that, the amount spent each year is pretty consistent?
I believe so, yes. I would need to double check, but I believe so.
All right, any questions?
Okay. Should I read the resolution?
Blue, yeah.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the October 13th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
Second, Ms. Zalis.
Is it a roll call?
Mr. Resco?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Have a good to talk about the audit.
First read is provided in the packet tonight. Kristin will have the auditor attend the October committee of the whole.
Correct.
So please submit any questions you have from now until then so that we give him enough time to answer those questions at the committee of the whole presentation.
That's the next meeting?
November, what?
It'll be at the.
October 27th.
October 27th.
Next meeting.
October 27th, okay. Okay. And then, is he going to tell us our? I still can't figure out the liability for retirement. Because a lot of different numbers in there to say the same thing. Amend the 2020, 2021 calendar?
You know, the governor declared the state holiday is Election Day. Those schools can be in session on Election Day. And so, we had an extra day built into our calendar, but we need to formalize and approve the amended calendar. So I am recommending that the board approve this tonight on the first read. It's not a substantial change to our calendar. And again, we had enough days already slated. We had one extra day embedded for an emergency. That will be covered by having the required day off for Election Day. So if the board feels comfortable, we could approve that tonight or we can put that on the consent agenda next month. But I would prefer if we could do it tonight unless there's concerns.
I don't have any concerns.
Do we have polling in this building?
We do not.
Okay.
So no objections to moving ahead, approving it today? It's statutory, obviously. Perhaps at the next meeting, the Student Association or Dr. Freitas, if we can get an update on what we've done in terms of encouraging students to become registrars or poll watchers? And there's been a movement to have juniors and seniors be eligible, so that would be helpful information to get out there.
And I could just speak a little bit. I know I've, I don't know how many forms I've signed for students to be election judges. So thank you to all the students, continue emailing me. I will sign them if I'm not available. Ms. Moller, my administrative assistant, will use my stamp. But guys, we want you guys to be election judges. I'm really proud to see you guys participate in our beautiful democracy. And then, of course, I will definitely by the next meeting, share some more info on that.
I also wanted to say, so in our GOV classes, our teachers have been encouraging us to vote, sign up as election judges. And the training isn't even bad either, it takes an hour. And you get a good amount of money, so I don't see the point of not doing it. You're just community service, it's just a good thing to do.
It's a win-win.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you do the like, the higher level one, it's like 300 and something dollars for the day.
It's 200 or 375, depending on what you're.
Yeah, 200 or 370, there's two levels, right? Like if you're the electronic person, right?
A technician, a technician and a judge.
Technician, there you go.
So we need a motion to.
Okay, sorry. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the addition of November 3rd, 2020 National Election Day as a legal holiday to the 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented in the October 13th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second.
Second, Tom Jacobs.
Is it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it.
The next agenda item is course fees. This is a first read, or we could, approval is recommended, but we are going to bring back more information, I believe, at the October cow. Dr. Freitas, do you want to touch on some of the course fees, please?
So sure. So, I mean, the fees are pretty straightforward. If the college board charges us a few more bucks, we have to charge a few more dollars. As you can see, a majority of the increases are because the college board increased the AP exam fee. For many of the art classes, we had to consider inflation and materials need, you know? Materials have become more expensive. And for AP French and AP Spanish, we're going to have those students also take the Apple exam so they can have a better opportunity to earn the seal of biliteracy. And that's an additional cost of $21. So everything, you know, is, it's relevant, you know, we believe is doable. And again, you know, many of the fees are kind of out of our control, so we just, you know, have to make sure that, you know, the accounts are squared away.
Yeah, that was the question I didn't ask previous to the meeting, but we're just passing on what's been increased to us, right?
Correct.
We're not increasing fees, they are.
Yes.
Okay. And just so families out there know, because I'm thinking, nobody wants to pay more money right now, but I would say 90% of these are a dollar increase, right? We're not talking about a lot of money. A few of them are 10, and then, like you said, the two foreign language ones are 21 apiece, but, so they're not, they're not a lot, but we're just passing on what we have, right?
That is correct, Ms. Town.
Or what we've been given to families.
That's right.
Okay.
So the board can take an additional two weeks to review these and we can approve at the next meeting, or they have the option if they would like to approve them tonight.
Yeah. Any issues on the left?
I don't object to that tonight.
Any issues on the right? Okay. Read the motion.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the course fees for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented in the October 13th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
Second by Ms. Zalis.
Is it a roll call?
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Resco?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Board policy?
Board policy, 2.20, the board just approved this policy. And there was one other update that was in the original packet back in the 104 press packet that came out in August and had dealt with during a disaster declaration, the ability of not having a forum and doing the virtual meetings and having a designated person on campus. So this is more or less a routine adoption of the policy. It's included in your packet in the event there's no physical presence due to a disaster declaration. So I would like the board to approve tonight these minor additions. However, once again, it's not something that is essential that has to happen right now. It could happen in two weeks at the next meeting. But I did review it, I also sent it to the Policy Advisory Council. I did not receive any concerns or any feedback. or any feedback. So this is just something to have in place. So it's up to the board if you'd like to do that tonight, or-
We didn't get any questions on you.
We did not.
Any thoughts on the left? Concerns? Nope?
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the update for board policy 2:20. Board of Education meeting procedures as presented in the October 13th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. And matters closed. Personnel, sale or lease of property, collective negotiation, school safety. This is another opportunity for visitor's statements. Discussion items, any requested? Consideration items for future meetings? Read the motion.
Okay, here we go. Closed session. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, collective negotiations, and school safety. Second.
Second, Ms. Ailis.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Chairman.